And we've got McCagge Nature Center and Connor Sullivan and Vitis Mausalitis. The center are here today. Connor is the board president and Vitis is a park ranger. McCagge offers experimental education, 91-acre park and a historic schoolhouse right across from King of Prussia. And I'm excited to take my son there soon. Activities include throwing rocks, very exciting for him. So it's a great educational hikes for kids of all ages. You can learn about preservation of ecosystem, including, you know, different invasive, sorry, preservation of native ecosystems and invasive species as well as cultural history of the surrounding area. And the members say it's serene place for recreation and reflection. So I want to thank McCagge for creating that space in our county and giving that opportunity for all of our kids. So come on up. Thank you. And we're going to vote on the installation of 18 new electric vehicle charging stations at five county facilities. And if that is approved, infrastructure investment will allow the county to transition more quickly to an EV-based fleet in all of the realms that is possible. So those charging stations are here at OMP, Cherry Street, Main Street, in our garages, but also in public parks, including Greenland Park, North Town Farm Park, Hemlock Point, and Lower Park Hyman Valley Park. So that county fleet is used by park rangers, a range of employees, assets and infrastructure, security, and we can move them towards more, you know, emissions-free vehicles with this kind of charging infrastructure. So finally, I'm going to bring up three environmental partners that do incredible work in the county today. And I'm going to announce, should I announce all of them and bring everyone up? We do one by one? So first, at the Park Hyman Watershed Conservancy, we've got Len Beltz here. He's the executive director of Conservancy and they're one of the regions, this is one of the region's largest watersheds. And it's 362 square miles encompassing 55 municipalities in four Pennsylvania counties, parks, mountains, and high, and Montgomery. Each year, Conservancy under Ryan's leadership leads a stream cleanup with volunteers from nearby towns, including East Greenville, Hensburg, Red Hill, Green Lane, Plainsville, Collegeville, and Trooper. The 2025 cleanup was just as fast as these can. And so we had 2,000 people cleaning up this area. Please, round of applause for that. And they were able to remove thousands of pounds of trash, 70,000 pounds of trash in one weekend from our stream. So please, you know, come on up and let's present to you a commendation. Next, we've got McCagge Nature Center and Connor Sullivan and Vitis Mausalitis. The center are here today. Connor is the board president and Vitis is a park ranger. McCagge offers experimental education, 91-acre park and a historic schoolhouse right across from King of Prussia. And I'm excited to take my son there soon. Activities include throwing rocks, very exciting for him. So, you know, it's a great, you know, they're a great educational hikes for kids of all ages. You can learn about preservation of ecosystem, including, you know, different invasive, sorry, preservation of native ecosystems and invasive species as well as cultural history of the surrounding area. And, you know, the members say it's serene place for recreation and reflection. So I want to thank McCagge for creating that space in our county and giving that opportunity for all of our kids. So come on up. Thank you. So we've got two more. So the next one, we talked about in the last meeting, and I'll give a little update on that, but our friends at Riverbend, Executive Director Aaron Riley's here. Riverbend is based in Lower Marion. It's been cornerstone of environmental education in our community for 50 years. Each year, more than 10,000 students visit the center for field trips, in camps, and these kids have the opportunity to have hands-on learning experiences centered around conservation. We were proud to have our open space board recommend a $400,000 grant, which we then approved as commissioners to help Riverbend secure nearby property where kids play in the creek, 1850 Springville Road. The goal for that purchase, the goal for that would be to purchase space where the kids learn and play in the creek, which is adjacent to the Riverbend site. We're working hard to make sure that that We're working hard to make sure that that happens. You know, fortunately, there is, you know, there was a hiccup in that a buyer wants to buy the land to develop a home. We've reached out to them directly. They've had an initial meeting with Riverbend to discuss possibilities, including easement. And I've talked with Lower Marion Township Commissioners, as well as our planning commission. We want to do everything we can to preserve the space. 10,000 kids use it every single year. And we may have a number of tools at our disposal as a county, municipality may have the same. And we've reached out just today to the buyer who wants to develop the land to begin that conversation. So stay tuned on that. But, you know, needless to say, you know, we, as a county and the community at large, just are so deeply appreciative for the work that happens at Riverbend. And the fact that we have 10,000 students learn and get that environmental education and experience, you know, right here in our community is, you know, is an incredible thing. So please come on up and thank you all. Final commendation on this front is for the Briar Bush Nature Center. We have here Mark Fallon, who's the director of the center in Abington. And there's a number of other board members here.
Couple of commissioners.
Commissioners who are here. And, you know, for those who haven't been, Briar Bush is a place where kids of all ages explore, protect nature. They encourage curiosity and scientific inquiry. They have hands-on play trails, bird observatories, summer camps, and more. It's been around in one form or another for about 100 years. And the neighbors in Abington, friends of Briar Bush, have been instrumental in that continued success. So thank you to everyone who's been a part of preserving and protecting the wildlife there, passing that knowledge on to our children. So please come on up. Thanks so much. Okay, all right. Taconi Creek Watershed wasn't able to make it, so we'll be sending them their certificate in the mail. We'll talk more about that in a future meeting. Finally, two final comments internally. We got a report from Moody's, which is fantastic. And, and we're very pleased to share that for the eighth year in a row, Montgomery County has received a AAA credit rating from Moody's Investor Services. Montgomery County is just one of 130 counties out of more than 3,000 counties across the nation to receive a AAA credit rating, which affirms the county's ability to pay its debts and borrow at the lowest possible interest rates, which is very important. Holding the highest possible bond rating for eight consecutive years is also an endorsement of the county's approach to budgeting, our commitment to transparency, and how we handle our finances across the board. And if you read the Moody's report, it'll tell you, you know, it repeatedly praised the management of the county. So I want to thank and express our recognition for our county's finance team, including our CFO, Doreton, who's made this possible so many years in a row, and, you know, his, his entire team as well. Exceptional ratings good for residents, businesses, and everything we're trying to do as a county is better because of that. So finally, we have a great new member of our leadership team, Mira Belsin, who joins us as deputy COO, along with Dr. Timber Williams and Stephanie Tipton. Mira joins us from the Department of State, where she served as the executive deputy secretary to the Secretary of State of the Commonwealth. And in that role, she oversaw elections, corporate and charity registrations, and occupational licensure. So when you read about the streamlining of licensing in the state, Mira played a critical role of that. And that's honestly, you know, a big thing that I think you probably heard from, from the governor's office in terms of what he's been able to do in his first term. She was also critical for us in terms of our ability to navigate the 2024 election. We were able to fix a number of issues we had in our administration process, and it wasn't without, you know, her advice and support from the Commonwealth that we could have gotten any of those things done. So Mira will be responsible for overseeing the operational work of the Planning Commission, the Commerce Department, External Affairs, Policy, the Board of Assessments, Communications, and Voter Services, of course. So really excited to work with, with Mira and have her on the team. She describes herself as an amateur restaurant critic. So please share all of your favorite Monaco places to eat, and hopefully we can convert her to being a Monaco foodie after being, you know, well, what's in Philly? Have you been to Traya yet? She's missing out, right? So that's number one. It's very close. But yeah, excited to have you on the team and welcome aboard. So with that, we'll turn it over to Commissioner Wyder.
Great, thank you. Good morning, everyone. How's everyone doing? Doing all right? Good, good. So welcome back to Narstown. We had a great meeting a couple of weeks ago in Lower Marion Township, and I want to thank them for hosting us. It's, it's great when we can take these meetings on the road, because I recognize 10 a.m. on a Thursday is not always conducive to all of our residents. And so we learn a lot from our residents who came and spoke, and it's always great to be in a different part of the county. And Mr. Morgan, thank you for traveling to Ardmore. Appreciate your commitment to always be here.
I took SEPTA, too.
You did, that's right. So you'll advocate for SEPTA funding, so the feds again. In Lower Marion, one of the things that we noticed and at previous meetings were that we had a number of people that came to speak on behalf of their friends and neighbors who are immigrants to this county. And I just want to take a moment to commend everyone who has advocated on behalf of our fellow residents. And I want to remind everyone in this room and those that are watching online that as long as I am on the floor, Montgomery County is and will continue to be a place where all people are welcomed and supported. We're proud to have a strong history of inclusivity, and we're continuing to learn from and advocate for our friends and neighbors who are feeling nervous, or scared by the federal government's hard-line stance on immigration. I often think about the community of Narstown, and I think about those that immigrated from Montella, Italy. Does anybody know that Montella, Italy, a lot of Italians immigrated to Narstown from Montella? In my family, when I was growing up, we had the honor to host two exchange students from Montella, Italy. And so we've got more than 100,000 residents that are immigrants to Montgomery County, and we are working with our Director of Immigrant Affairs to think about ways that we can continue to support our vibrant immigrant community. So more to come on that. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. The next thing is I'd like to take a moment to honor a Lansdale native who received a hero's welcome home this past Saturday. Corey Nowraki was a decorated Marine officer who received two Purple Hearts and a Bronze Star for valor during his 20-year service in the Marines. He retired from the Marines as the first sergeant in 2021. But in September of last year, Corey decided to continue his service, volunteering to fight alongside the Ukrainian army. Sadly, on October 28th, Corey was killed in action during a reconnaissance mission. Corey's mother, Sandy, worked diligently to bring her son home and return him to Lansdale. He completed that long journey home on Saturday, escorted from the Philadelphia airport by the Philadelphia State Police, and eventually the Talomason, North Penn, and Fairmount Fire Companies. So I want to commend not only Corey for his bravery and dedication to freedom, but also to his mother Sandy, who overcame so much to bring her son home. So if we could pause for a moment of silence for Corey. Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize that this week is Local Government Week in Pennsylvania. We say it often, but we are incredibly grateful for the leaders in our 62 municipalities around the county who we have the honor of partnering with on so much of what we do in Montgomery County. So many of our priorities for the county, whether it's affordable housing, sustainable infrastructure, rely on buy-in from our municipal leaders around the county. It's also National County Government Month. So I want to extend this honor to all the public servants at all local levels. We have 3,000 incredible employees right here in Montgomery County, and it's an incredible privilege to help lead this great workforce. Our staff displays so much dedication and care on a daily basis, and we're grateful for their impact to our residents. So if you're a county employee, can you just stand and be acknowledged? Thank you, thank you. And now I have the honor of acknowledging five Monaco employees who have been recognized by their peers for outstanding work. Our Way to Go Monaco winners for the month of April are here. So in attendance, first, I'd like to acknowledge Ryan Maddox. Where's Ryan? There you are, okay. Who is a receptionist with, with the clerk of courts team. Ryan's colleagues say he consistently demonstrates an outstanding work ethic, bringing positive energy into the office every single day. He has a commendable attention to detail and always takes the time to double-check his work, avoiding potential miscommunications between departments. Thank you, Ryan, for being such a team player. Next, uh... Next, we have our very own Judy Trombetta, who works... Stand up, Judy. Well, I have a five-page speech prepared about all that you did, in all seriousness. Judy works in our commissioner's office as an intergovernmental affairs manager. I can attest that Judy has been a great team player and great addition to our office since she joined last May. She was an invaluable part of our elections team this past year. She served as a point of contact on nights and weekends for our satellite offices, including our mobile satellite office. She coordinated staff and provided great information to the voting public. We're really grateful for your work here in Montgomery County, and I see you so many places. You're always there to lend a hand, and I love actually seeing your son at some of the community events. So I want to thank you for all of the hard work and all that you do for this great county. I'll invite you to move up for when I'm finished these last ones. Okay. Michelle Franz, a senior district court clerk in the District Court 38-1-18. Want to know what district court it is. A former police officer, Michelle is a kind and patient person who makes her colleagues feel welcome. She has been a tremendous asset to the Montgomery County Court system and has been a great member of Judge Duffy's staff. I want to thank Michelle for her great work. Next, we have Tierr Nemo, who is a correctional officer at the county. Tierr comes to work every single day with a smile on her face and is always more than willing to assist her coworkers. She goes above and beyond to mentor newer staff, all while completing her own daily tasks. She's also actively serving in the military and was greatly missed during her last deployment. So thank you, Tierr, for your service to the county and to our country. And last, Teresa Fines is a advocate on our Community Connections Team with the Department of Health and Human Services. Teresa makes very strong connections with our residents on a daily basis. Her colleagues say people rave about her style of engagement. She is persistent and finding solutions to challenging problems, which is a tremendous asset to our county. Our advocates are really on the front lines of connecting our residents with county resources and programs. So I want to thank Teresa for all of her hard work, and thank you to all of our Way to Go winners. So, the two that are here will take a quick picture. And lastly, I'd like to take the time to acknowledge that this time of year is a holy time for a number of our residents from different faiths. The Muslim community celebrated Eid in early April. Our Jewish residents are celebrating Passover this week, and this Sunday is Easter Sunday. You know, last year during Easter, actually on Easter Sunday, I was saying goodbye to my mother, and she transitioned on Easter Monday. And so when we think about this time of year, and we think about all of the blessings in our lives, take the time to, whatever faith or whatever religion you, or whatever guide, god you pray to, take the time in this moment to reflect on all things that are good. So with that, I wish everyone that celebrates happy Passover and a happy Easter. Turn it over to Commissioner DeBello.
Thank you. And I, unfortunately, you're fortunate, I remember, it's a year already, and that was, you know, a very tough time of year for you. And I know that we tried to be extremely supportive, you know, as you were going through that, because it was both your mother and your grandmother within a week or so. So, you know, we're always here, you know, to be supportive as well. So I just want to recognize that. It's a one-year anniversary for that.
Thank you.
And you did an incredible job over the year, dealing with all that, with your family stepping up and being, you know, the new, the matriarch, I guess you would say.
Yeah, I'm the new mom of the family.
Yeah, yep, yep. So, well, thank you. You know, as, as mentioned, you know, with the officer that, that, that was brought back that passed for his service and all that, it's, it's just very unfortunate. And, you know, we have, you know, officer soldiers and all that that have been either hurt, killed, and all type of situations throughout the world. But we also have, you know, locally, we have officers, police officers as well, that have given their, given their lives in the line of duty. And fortunately, I'll say, last week, we had an officer, a Pottstown officer, Whitney, who was shot in the line of duty, and thank God that he will be able to, he's recovering from his, from the being shot. He was shot in the shoulder, but, you know, a couple inches one way or the other could have ended differently. So we, you know, we want to let him know that, you know, our thoughts and prayers are going out to him. It was a very intense situation in Pottstown last week. The alleged gunman began shooting at police, you know, after he ran from a traffic incident and eventually barricaded himself in a house. You know, ultimately, the shooter was... You know, ultimately, the shooter was... I don't like to say the word, but was killed by police. It was a very scary, very intense situation up there. We thank all our police officers, firefighters, and EMTs that were on scene. And always, I like to say that when you're out in the community, when you're out in the public, and you see police officers, first responders, take two minutes or even 20 seconds, whatever it may be, thank them for everything that they're doing for us to keep us safe in our communities. Because without them, you know, who knows what it would be like? And it's a day that we never want to see happen. And they deserve our appreciation, our thanks. And so again, please thank them for all their service. We, you know, we talked about the fire in Abington and everything that, you know, two months ago, I guess it was already, and all the first responders that were there. So they just, they do incredible, incredible service for all of us. On Sunday, Commissioner McGea and myself were able to attend the annual Valley Forge Rev. One, Rev. Run. That's hard to say quickly. They do a race each year. It's a huge fundraiser. All proceeds go to help make, you know, improvements at the Valley Forge Park, which, as you all know, is right in our backyard. Commissioner McGea had mentioned during what we gave a few remarks, and he's talked about it being a gem right here in our backyard. And I have to agree with that, that it is, you know, it's a Valley Forge Park. They do incredible job over there. It's a very beautiful park. It's well-maintained. And over the years, I think that it started in 2006, and over the years, they've raised over $800,000 for this, and it's put on by the Valley Forge Tourism Board. This year, they raised, between sponsors and runners, they raised over $95,000. So it was a huge event, very well-intended. And we didn't know if it was going to be raining or not. And Commissioner McGea and I both said that we'll see it next year. I think they think we're going to run in it, but I don't know if that's going to happen or not. But we'll see what happens. So with that, also, I want to point out that up in our Springfield School District, where I was a school board member for 12 years in my area, we had a very exciting thing happen this past week. One of our own, Lucy Olson, who was a, played girls' basketball at Springfield, scored the most points in Springfield history of girls' basketball. I think boys as well. Phenomenal player. She spent a few years as a starter at Villanova and did her last year senior in Iowa, I believe. She was just drafted for the WNBA this week. She was in the second round, 23rd overall pick. So we want to congratulate her. She's done incredible in high school and college, and I know she's going to be incredible when she makes it, when she starts playing at the WNBA for Washington Mystics. So we're really excited about that. I think she might be, I could be wrong, but I think she might be the first female athlete that got drafted in WNBA from Montgomery County. And I'm not sure how far out from Pennsylvania recently, but that's a great accomplishment. And I know she worked hard over the years with that. Also, I just want to mention that last month, when we had our, we were talking about our financial situation, getting an update from our CFO about, you know, closing out the 2024 budget and, or the 24 to 2024 year. And we, you know, we saw about a $9 million surplus that we're going to figure out what we're going to do with it as we finalize 2024. We have our work cut out for us, as I mentioned last month. We have some deficit numbers that we have to work on. We potentially are between $40 and $45 million. But I'm also glad that, you know, working with Commissioner McGea and Commissioner Weiner, that we're looking at doing what's possible. We have a firm that's going to be coming in, or we put it out for bids for firms to come in and help us identify potential cost savings throughout the county. We know that we're working with our department heads to figure out areas that we could have expense reduction. I mean, so we are doing everything possible here in Montgomery County to not only become very fiscal responsible with our spending, with expenses and all that, but we're also trying to do everything possible to either eliminate or reduce the tax burden on our community. Unfortunately, expenses grow quicker than what our revenue growths have been in the last couple of years. It's a real number. It's real out there. We see it. You know, costs go up every day. Everything that we do here in Montgomery County, our costs go up every day. Salaries go up. Everything goes up. And unfortunately, those expenses are growing faster. But we are going to do what we can to reduce that as much as possible over the next several months. So I'm sure there'll be more to come on that. But I, because I did want to mention, I mention this because last month I did talk about the numbers a little bit, and I just want everyone to know that we are looking at it. We're looking at it very seriously, and we're doing what we can as we continue through 2025. And finally, as mentioned by Commissioner Weiner, this, you know, this weekend is Easter, and it's celebrated across the county and country. And there's many holidays that occur. And this one is very special as well to the Christian community, as well as Passover that's occurring as well within our Jewish community. So we all have to take a moment, like you mentioned, to whoever, whatever you do, enjoy the weekend, be at peace, and celebrate your holidays. Because we are, we are very dedicated as a community to recognizing everyone and what they believe in, which is extremely important. And I think after all this rain, the weather's actually going to be nice this weekend for a couple of days, and so we could look forward to that as well. So with that, I want to, again, wish everyone a happy Easter as well. So thank you.
So moving on. Next, we'll hear from our Coroner, Dr. Janine Darby, as well as our District Attorney, Kevin Steele, on Drug Takeback Day, which is April 26th.
So when you hear that you're going to hear from the coroner and the DA, it's typically not positive information. Today's different. And we have some good news to report on some important issues that face our community. So, Dr. Darby, you want to go?
You go first.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the invitation to speak today, DA Steele. Thank you. And I'm just really, really excited that we have this partnership with the District Attorney, Kevin Steele. And we collaborate very closely as well. Drug-related deaths are more than just statistics. So they represent real lives lost and families forever changed. Each decedent we see here in the coroner's office is a reminder of the deep and lasting impact addiction has on our communities. So accidental deaths, like I mentioned last month, is our second most common manner of death after natural in our office. And the majority of those are drug-related, whether it's street drugs, whether it's prescription drugs, whether it's over-the-counter drugs. We'll get more into that with our District Attorney, Kevin Steele. But today, we have some encouraging news to share. So hold tight. In Montgomery County, the number of drug-related deaths is trending down and has reached the lowest level we have seen since 2011, as you see on this chart here. DA Steele will share more about the trends we're seeing, the preventative measures that, you know, the team effort, especially coming from his office, has done. And we're working together to keep this momentum going and so we can support our communities even further. So DA Steele, carry on.
You need to stay here and correct me on any of these issues that I get wrong. But I think, sir, you saw the numbers a moment ago, and, you know, what we deal with and look at in any of these. And I hope one of the takeaways of this, although this is very positive, the direction we're going, is that every time we talk about a number, that's a life. And we need to keep our foot on the gas with this. We're making really great progress, but too many families are being affected by this. And we see and have seen over a period of time now the drug fentanyl that, you know, now has a lot of national folks looking at it, is the thing that's killing the most people in our community and has for a long period of time. But this is, this is something that we faced. And, you know, when somebody goes to the coroner's office, they're taking their blood, and we're measuring to see what it is is killing people. And that's, that's the poison, fentanyl, that we face. So if we go to the next one, as Dr. Darby mentioned, this is going the right way. 139, which is almost a 27% decrease in what we saw from the previous year. And that's, that's better than the national trends. The national trends, it has gone down also. But the number of deaths for us has trended in a better way on this. So, you know, it's good news. I hope it's going to get better because, as I said, each of these is a life. If you could go to the next one. So, you know, again, we look at the numbers and the trends on what has gone down. And, you know, 2011, when this started to rise to what we hope will be forever the peak of number of deaths was in 2020 at 257 lives lost to the poisons that are out there. So it's a significant decrease for us. Why? And I think that's a lot of the questions being asked out there. And I don't think there's one reason that we can put to it. I think it's a variety of reasons. And, you know, I'll focus a little bit on the teamwork that has gone on in Montgomery County that we're very appreciative of and the focus to address this. So if you go to the next one, please. So again, fentanyl is number one for us in terms of, in terms of death. But what we're seeing, and when you look at the rises of it, is methamphetamine and cocaine are the next two. So fentanyl, one; meth, two; cocaine, three; xylazine, four. And that's, unfortunately, you know, we're seeing powder. We're seeing crack. We're seeing a rise in that, and that's contributing to deaths. You know, some of the things that we're seeing nationally and the DEA has been talking about, a little while back, 7 and 10 pills were deadly. They were coming, and these are being manufactured in Mexico. Cartels are, you know, bringing them into the country. And, you know, poison, 7 and 10 are deadly. Now it's 5 and 10. So still very, very dangerous in terms of what's out there. If you could go to the next one, please. This has been a big one in terms of why our numbers have not been worse. We began trying to get this into police and first responders. We used drug forfeiture money in the beginning to do this. The county embraced that and has helped and worked. Like, every police car has this. They save lives daily with this. Otherwise, the numbers would be much worse. And that's part of this commitment from law enforcement, from first responders, you know, to save lives. And sometimes they save lives several times. But we hope that people will have the resources to not continue to go down this track.
Public service announcement. Narcan is free in all pharmacies. I have one in my car. So get one in your car, so you have one on deck when the time comes. Hopefully, never, but, you know, that's my public service announcement.
Does it expire?
I'm sorry?
Does it expire?
It does. They'll have a number on the back. Yeah.
And look, you know, when you're dealing with something like this, this saves people from a fentanyl overdose. It does not save people from a methamphetamine overdose, a cocaine overdose, or a xylazine overdose. So it's really in the opioid area. If you go to the next one, please. All right. So before I focus on the law enforcement efforts, I'm so glad Lori Schreiber is here today, too. When Josh Shapiro was the Chair of the Commissioners, he appointed Lori and I to sit on an opioid task force to give recommendations for the county. And we worked, you know, very hard on that. And a lot of those were taken on by our law enforcement community and the opioid task force that was started. But I also have to talk about partnerships from our local departments. A lot of our departments gave us detectives to investigate each of these overdoses as a homicide. And when we could prove that someone distributed this poison, and that was the cause or the thing that killed them, in combination with working with the coroner's office, we would charge drug delivery resulting in death. And that, we know, has had an effect because we hear about it. Like, people don't want to do this in Montgomery County because of how we've taken a stance on this and have put the resources to try to make a difference in there. So we've investigated 915 of these cases. Now, all of them did not turn out to be prosecutions because we didn't have enough evidence to move forward, but that's the work that is being done. And a lot of them, it was, it was an aspect of trying to work with these families and letting somebody know that they cared about their loved one that was lost. So that has made some good progress there. If you could go to the next one, please. So I want to talk about drug takeback now. We know that a lot of this starts from the medicine cabinet. And we have heard story after story that has ended up in tragedy of where this began. And, you know, whether it's over-prescribing, whether it's people just saving drugs in their medicine cabinets. There's too many opioids out there that can start people down this bad track that leads to tragedy. So in 2010, we began this. We got MedX boxes in every one of the police departments. We do this semi-annually, so it's coming up on the 26th. And we've collected and destroyed more than 131,000 pounds over the course of time. So if you think about that, that's a lot of drugs that are not being put down the toilet. They're not going in the landfill. They're not getting into somebody's hands that could lead to tragedy. So we're very proud of how this has gone. If you could go to the next one, please. So we have very talented, creative staff. And if you want to stop over in our office at some point, we have all the posters, you know, up to try to increase people's attention on this important issue. So I looked back on this last night, and this film came out in 1992, when I graduated from law school.
Oh, you'll say high school.
Yeah, not high school. Tom Cruise, Jack Nicholson, Demi Moore in this great film with the tagline, "You can't handle the truth." "You can't handle the truth." So we hope that we will get some attention on this. And we have our posters. They're out in all the police departments now. We're trying to get this out and get this message out to as many people as we can. If you can't make this 10 to 2 period, you can take it to the police departments on any day. You can take it to the courthouse. We have a lot of buy-in on this. And we hope to take a lot of drugs off of the, out of the medicine cabinets that are not necessary. If you go to the next one. So 38 locations on the 26th, 35 police departments, three food stores. We're going to, and at the food stores, I occasionally get, "Why don't you do that all the time?" Or, "Why don't you just stick a box up there?" I really don't want to see one of these boxes getting dragged down the street by somebody taking them. So they're in police departments where it's hard to steal things from. And you want to encourage this to everybody to do. Next one, please. So what do they take? Tablets, capsules, inhalers, vaping products, creams, ointments, nasal sprays, even pet medicines. If you go to the next one, please. We don't take liquids. We don't take needles. These are the officers that are out there collecting them and then giving them. And then we have them all destroyed and do that quickly. So thank you for giving us this time to, one, talk about the positive trends that are going on. And we appreciate the commitment and the partnerships that are making this happen. And, two, to get this word out, to really encourage people to get their drugs out of their medicine cabinets so they don't end up in the wrong hands and lead to tragedies here. And again, I'm really glad Lori's here because we started this a long time ago. And it's been a long fight. And unfortunately, I think we stumbled away. We'll answer any questions if you have.
Any questions?
Do you track overdoses overall?
We do.
And how's that trend line look?
So that's what we've just gone through.
Not that, I mean overdoses just...
They're not just, if you saw the first slide, that's the total overdoses.
These are deaths.
What's that?
I think he's asking for...
Oh, I'm sorry. For people that didn't die?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's more on the national scale because hospitals report that to probably the state and everything. So I don't have that number off the top of my head. But overdoses are happening in our community. But right now, we're able to track the deaths because we want people to live.
Absolutely. But the reason I bring it up is because, you know, and when you, I think it was, the high numbers were 18, 19, 20 and all that. But it was after that when the Narcan and all that started having it everywhere. And like you said, I didn't realize you'd get it free at pharmacies. So there's cause and effect, right? So overdoses might be up, but we have more tools out there that are available to help people quickly to reduce the number of deaths. But overdose, so I'd really like to know at some point what the overdose rate is as well because I think people need to understand that, that deaths might be going down. But if the trend line's going up in overdoses, we should talk about that as well. Loading up the police cars with Narcan and all that is extremely important. I know we have it in schools and there's a lot of places that exist. But overdoses is a reality as well.
Yeah, Commissioner, there's a lot of saves.
Oh, absolutely.
A lot of saves in these police departments.
So that number could be a lot higher if we didn't have the Narcan everywhere.
Oh, my goodness.
Right. So that's what I'm trying to get to. It's like people need to, I don't want people to think that that's going down. There's still a huge problem out there.
Oh, sure.
You bet. And I appreciate that because I think that's a really important message in this. Can't take a foot off the gas.
Right.
There's a lot of work still to be done, but it's at least trending in the right direction.
We're saving lives, which is important.
And the Drug Takeback Day is very important because we're talking about street drugs all the time, but over the counter medications are also causing deaths. So this is a great effort that the DA's office is doing to make sure those numbers continue to trend down.
I have a question. You don't get, you don't, you know, ask questions?
You could ask me after.
I was just going to say, appreciate the work you continue to do. And just as a sister of an addict, we've collectively talked about that. The work that we're also doing to invest in programming and to decriminalize people that have substance use disorders, just really proud of the work that we're doing in Montgomery County. You know, addiction doesn't discriminate, rich, poor, Republican, Democrat, white, black. And so I just look forward to continuing to do these types of programs and other programs countywide to help people that might be struggling in this area.
This is impacting every neighborhood, every place across Montgomery County, the state, the nation. And I say, there's no one...
One size fits all.
There's no one thing that's solving this issue. It's got to be a combination of working in a lot of different efforts to try to help people that will take help. And sometimes it has to be forced through going to jail over it. And sometimes you save lives that way, but that's not what is going to work for everybody. So having opportunities that you all have created makes a difference.
Yeah, well, thank you. This is, I mean, this is an incredible achievement, which, as you noted, took the work and collaboration of so many people over so many years. So, you know, Commissioner DeBella's right in that it doesn't mean that we don't have still a crisis of addiction and other issues that arise. But saving lives is a good place to start, and we've made great progress. So awesome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll leave posters for anybody that wants to. And shout out to Jill Neal, who created another great one.
Next, we'll hear from our clerk of courts, Lori Schreiber, on the second chair.
Before I start, though, actually, about what we were just talking about, I just wanted to say to Commissioner DeBella, the first alarmers or the EMTs and the police departments do count those Narcan saves. What probably isn't captured is if a family member had Narcan and that may, unless they end up at a hospital or something, that's probably not kept in the count. First of all, I want to thank you all for inviting us for a few minutes to speak about an important event that we have coming up. And on the slide that you'll see here, this is a little bit about the clerk of court's office. So just to give you a little snapshot, or give the public a little snapshot of what we do in our office, we are the filing office for the criminal courts in Montgomery County. Next slide, please. And so in our effort to increase what we were doing and let the public know about the many services in our office and to share some important justice-related topics, we've recently created a series of videos. They're available on our social media, Facebook, Instagram, and also on the county's YouTube channel. So here's a couple of the topics, but please check out our videos. Next slide, please. Okay. So this is kind of getting to the heart of why we're here today. So each April, the United States Department of Justice celebrates Second Chance Month, recognizing the importance of helping individuals in their successful reentry from incarceration. I want to share some information that I also shared last year. According to the National Conference on State Legislatures, approximately 77 million Americans or one in every three adults have some kind of police record, a criminal record, which can be an arrest record, criminal charges, or a conviction. This can create barriers to jobs, occupational licensing, housing, and higher education opportunities. Each year, more than 600,000 inmates are released from state and federal correctional facilities and transitioned back into the community. Another 11 million individuals cycle through local jails each year. So in 2017, the Prison Fellowship started this recognition of April as Second Chance Month, with the White House issuing the first proclamation in 2018. Next slide, please. You see a flyer for our upcoming event here. And this is the main reason we are here today is to announce the clerk of court's office is sponsoring their third annual Second Chance Resource Fair. Although Second Chance Month has a primary focus for people either reentering the community or the families of those who may be incarcerated, anyone is invited to participate who has been impacted by the criminal justice system. So you'll see on here that the event is at the George Washington Carver Center. This year, we've changed the time to later in the afternoon, so it's going to be from 3:00 to 5:00 due to some feedback that more participants might be able to attend at a later time. We used to have it in the morning, so I wanted to point that out. And another big change this year is that we are co-sponsoring the event with the Montgomery County Reentry Initiative. And so to talk a little bit more about MCRI, I want to introduce Alisa McBride. And I'll do the next slide, please.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you, everyone, for letting us share a little bit about MCRI today. We've been around since 2017. We were formed in collaboration with Family Services, Montgomery County Correctional Facility, Adult Probation and Parole, the Public Defender's Office, and the Criminal Justice Advisory Board. I'm happy to say, in the past almost eight years, we've grown to 150 passionate and dedicated individuals and organizations that are all committed to helping individuals who are returning to Montgomery County following incarceration. I think everyone in this room probably knows how difficult it is when you're returning to your families and communities from incarceration of all the things that you have to do when you return home. It's really quite overwhelming. So the goal of MCRI is for all of our organizations, individuals, to work together collaboratively to coordinate our approaches, to remove barriers that individuals have to successful reentry. And we don't just do this by sitting in a room and talking amongst ourselves about what we think reentrance need. We're very data-driven. So we do a strategic plan every three years. I brought our most recent one, and I think Mandy has it to share if anyone's interested. But every three years, we do a very comprehensive risk and needs assessment in partnership with the Montgomery County Correctional Facility. We just did it again in 2024 where we were able to successfully survey 890 individuals who are incarcerated, asking them, "What do you need when you come out?" We coupled that by surveying individuals in the community, our key stakeholder survey. We had over 100 individuals who have returned to the community. So they are reentrance in the community, and we asked them, "What did you need? What resources existed? What didn't exist? How can we be of more assistance? How can we be more effective?" So in addition to that, we also held focus groups in the community with recently returning citizens and at the Montgomery County Correctional Facility. We had a lot of discussions about existing resources, needed resources. And every three years, we come up with five priority barriers to successful reentry that we are going to focus on for the next three years. So it may not surprise you to see what we chose for this year. Housing, of course, is number one. We used to have gaining and maintaining employment, but we changed that to career development because we feel it's important for people to have opportunities to learn and grow and further education, to have jobs that they enjoy that meet their skill level and their interests. Accessing timely mental health, medication, and drug and alcohol services post-release. MCRI has had a lot of success with this. We actually had a Second Chance Act grant for three years in combination with Montgomery County Correctional Facility that now has become common practice where people have access to counseling and intakes from the CBHCs, Community Medical Health Centers. They're going to be returning to upon release. And then post-release, they're connected with a case manager who expediently gets them connected to the CBHC so that they have no interruption in medication or counseling. Parenting and childcare is our fourth, and then our final is natural supports. So we are collaborative. We meet quarterly. I think we had our last meeting in March, and we had, I think, close to 90 people in attendance. So they're very big meetings. They're held at the Lower Providence Presbyterian Church in Norristown. And then we have our action team meetings in between. We are very dedicated to just not talking about reentry and talking about the problems, but actually doing something about it. We are very passionate, very welcoming of anyone who shares our mission. So if you're interested in joining MCRI, learning more about MCRI, please feel free to reach out to me. You'll find my contact information there. And Lori, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak and allowing us to come through this.
So my staff, particularly Mandy Garofalo, has worked very hard to make this event go very smoothly for all three years, but this year. And if you look at the slide here, you'll see some of the many organizations that will be represented as vendors this year. In addition to resource tables, we plan on having an expungement clinic, a wellness area for the participants, and a notary will be available from 4:00 to 5:00 for people who might need notary services. So we have a really rich variety of resources, and we hope to help even more participants this year and have a great attendance. So with that, we're asking everyone, next slide, please, to help us spread the word about both this event and also that April has been declared Second Chance Month. And in closing, I want to read some words directly from the National Reentry Resource Center. When people successfully reenter their communities after incarceration, communities are stronger and healthier, neighborhoods are safer, and taxpayer dollars are saved. The bipartisan Second Chance Act has fueled significant drops in recidivism since it passed in 2008 and was reauthorized in 2018, reflecting a nationwide commitment to second chances. We are extremely proud that reentry continues to be an important focal point to both our, to both our office and for the county government with the ongoing support of the Board of Commissioners. So thank you again for allowing us this time at this meeting. We appreciate it.
All right. All right. Next up, we will hear from Laura Williamson.
Sorry.
All right. You want to come up? Oh, got it.
No, that's me.
That's for you. We're going to take a couple.
I didn't know who held it in the photo.
One, two, three.
Thank you. Great. Help him.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Hello.
Hi. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you so much for having me today. My name is Laura Williamson, and I am the Community Traffic Safety Program Coordinator for the Montgomery County Office of Public Health. I'm here to talk about the 2025 Monaco Trail Challenge. So to begin, let me explain what the Monaco Trail Challenge is. Essentially, it is a scavenger hunt along all of these 18 trails, parks and trails throughout the county. The goal is to visit as many parks and trails as you can within the timeframe and to write down the trail symbol as proof that you visited. The Trail Challenge runs from April 26th for seven months all the way till December 1st. for seven months all the way till December 1st, so you have plenty of time to visit as many parks and trails as you can. We also offer three free spaces, so people can write in any park or trail of their choosing. People can also visit historical sites throughout the county and count those. And any of the free spaces can be anywhere throughout the country, throughout the world. It doesn't just have to be in Monaco. We also offer three achievement levels for visiting five, 10, or 15 or more parks and trails. And we just encourage everyone to explore and enjoy the parks and trails as they wish. You can walk, bike, roll, run, do whatever you want. And I also want to note, some of these trails are very long. You do not have to travel the entire length of the trail. You can visit a trail, go on a leisure walk, have a little picnic, find the trail symbol, and call it a day. So if you're still not totally sure if the Trail Challenge is for you, here are some reasons to get out and go. First of all, the Trail Challenge, it's free. It's available for all ages, all capabilities, and it's a really good time. It improves your mental health. Every year, we survey our participants, and last year, 73% of surveyed participants said that being a part of the challenge, being outdoors, being physically active, improved their mental health. It's also a great way to become more physically active. The Trail Challenge is a great way to get active and stay active. Feedback from our surveyed participants reported that 72% of respondents walked more, more than 17% biked more, and more than 13% ran more as a result of being a part of the challenge. It's a great way to connect with your community. The Trail Challenge is a great way to explore not only the parks and trails, but also the local businesses that Montgomery County has to offer. 67% of surveyed participants learned something new about the county by being a part of the Trail Challenge. There's so much to see and explore. Montgomery County just celebrated the 100 Miles of Trail Milestone. We're so lucky to live, work, and play in an area that prioritizes parks and trails, so it's really, we want to encourage people to take advantage of that. And finally, Montgomery County is so beautiful. We are so lucky to have the Schuylkill River, Perkeomen River. We have a national park in our county. There's so much to see, so I really encourage everyone to get out there. Here are some testimonies from participants from the 2024 Monaco Trail Challenge. First one says, "This was a great challenge that led me to try out new trails that I love." The next one says, "It's our eighth year as a mother-daughter tradition. We love it. Thank you for helping us to prioritize some time together in the outdoors. All else fades to the background when we can just be together." And finally, "Thank you for organizing this challenge because it motivates me to get out to the different parks." And this is what we see a lot. People reach out to us and just thank us for motivating them and like kind of educating them of the different parks, the different areas throughout the county. So I really encourage you guys to check out all of the parks. New to 2025, we are happy to announce we are adding Twining Valley Park to the Trail Challenge. Located in Upper Dublin, this park has over seven miles of trails that you can walk, bike, run, whatever you want. It also has a dog park, fishing spots, and it's a really great asset, so I encourage everyone to check it out. It's a beautiful park. And I'm excited to share that we are kicking off the Trail Challenge with a kickoff and 10th anniversary celebration on Saturday, May 3rd, from 10:00 to 12:00 at Central Perkeomen Valley Park. At the event, we will have a free helmet distribution for kids. We're going to have community partners, safety resources. We're going to do crafts and activities. It's going to be a really, really fun day, so I hope everyone can join. You can register for the event with that QR code, and it's going to be a good day. Registration for the 2025 Monaco Trail Challenge opened up today. You can scan that QR code to register, or you can visit our website, montgomerycountypa.gov/trailchallenge to register. On the website, we also have the Trail Card, which is a helpful guide to navigate the Trail Challenge. It has a map inside that shows you how the trails connect and help you navigate everything. We also have tips for completing the Monaco Trail Challenge, safety tips for staying safe on the trail. We have scavenger hunts for kiddos and a ton of other resources. So check out that website. Thank you so much for having me. If you have any questions, you can email me at trailchallenge@montgomerycountypa.gov. Good luck completing the Monaco Trail Challenge. Have fun on the trails. Do you have any questions?
Great job. Thanks, John.
I need to do the Trail Challenge.
You do. Everyone does. And I actually, I brought trail cards and flyers. They're all over on the table, so if anyone's interested, have at it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I think I made it, you know, three trails in last year, so I tried to improve my...
I think we did one trail together.
Yeah, we did one.
The trigger trails, that counted.
That did count. That did count. I'll do more this time.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
Hi. Thank you very much for having me. My name is John Lesher. I'm the Environmental Planning Assistant Manager. I'm here today to briefly introduce you to our newest product, which hopefully will be a benefit for all of our communities. Before we get into it, I may be the one standing here, but this product would not have been possible without our whole team under the leadership of Scott France, Patty Guttenplan, our design team of Anastasia Summers, Robert Cartier, Jeff Fohn, Kevin Chivu, Matt Popack, our Transportation Planning Manager, along with our community planners, Margot Petruska and Tim Kenechki. So that's a lot of people covering a lot of different backgrounds. So let's talk about why we needed such a large team to do this product. Next slide, please. So what is it? It is an online tool. It's using what's called the Experience Builder product. It's posted on the Planning Commission website, so it's accessible to everybody. And what's goal is to help support the transition of our communities towards EVs if they so desire. We are seeing our communities are interested in EV ownership. The market is driving this. As Commissioner McKeever pointed out, the number of EVs in the state has tripled since 2021, and Montgomery County is the hotbed of EV vehicle registrations. Our municipalities are responding to that. They want to be receptive and supportive of that transition. They're also aware that there has been grant funding available in Montgomery County in Harleysville and Horsham. They took advantage of a NAVI grant, and we now have publicly accessible EV chargers that follow us through those grants. Now, that funding may be slightly question as we move forward, but it's not out of the picture. We want to prepare as if either the market or the grants will drive this moving forward so our communities are prepared. Being a planning commission, the tool that we've created is mostly a planning tool. If you are driving your vehicle and you're like, "Where am I going to charge?" There are multiple of apps dedicated to that. I love our tool, but maybe not come to the Planning Commission website to find out exactly where you should charge on the go. This is a tool that is really going to help our decision makers and our stakeholders think about their communities and where the EV infrastructure could be placed so we can move forward successfully. Next slide, please. To start this off, the website, the tool has an educational component. We want all of our community members, whether they are elected officials, municipal staff, or public members, to have a basic understanding of EV technology, the vehicles, the chargers, especially the different types of chargers that are available, the Level 1, the Level 2, the DC fast charging, Level 3, and what the issues are, like what are some of the costs? Where can it be installed? What's their best functionality? So we can all start to think about this in a practical manner moving forward. Next slide, please. So this is the fun part of the... I mean, I'm saying that ordinances aren't fun. As a planner, they are. But we wanted to have something that really drew people in and allowed them to explore their communities. So the tool has an interactive mapping application where somebody can go in and look at their community. Where are the chargers now? Who owns chargers? And then some of the things about their community, whether it's land use, whether it's zoning, whether it's publicly accessible properties. And they can start to think about who doesn't have the ability to charge. 80% of charging occurs at home. And we have a tremendous amount of people who don't have a driveway, don't have a garage. How are they going to charge? Where can they charge? So a community can start to think about where are those populations and how can we have them have publicly accessible charging? So the mapping tool allows somebody to really further that narrative, have that conversation, and further understand their communities moving forward. Next slide, please. We understand that this is an emerging technology. It's an emerging technology. It's an emerging issue in our communities. So we really wanted to talk to our communities about some of the challenges and the opportunities that they may face. So part of the tool has, you know, a description of the challenges. Let's address these. Let's think about these. So we don't get... My son and I were driving around, and we took the picture of the car parked on the sidewalk right next to St. Joe's Prep with a charger like just out the door. There's probably a better way our communities can handle charging. So let's think about what these issues are. Let's think about, we hear about fire hazards. We hear about, you know, all of these issues. Let's have an honest conversation about those so we're all on the same page and our communities can move together to find the solutions that we need. Next slide, please. And being planners, we love to do ordinances. So our team has created a model ordinance for our communities that tries to address these issues. There is nothing more detrimental to a technology emerging in a community than something bad happens, that it's not done responsibly, that it's, you know, that you can find a bad example of whatever it may be. So let's give our communities the tools to prepare themselves to allow EV infrastructure and to do it in a way that's safe and responsible. One of the big things that our ordinance tackled that some of the others in our region have not is the on-street parking. You know, for those people who don't have a garage, don't have a driveway, is there a way to tackle it where somebody could charge while using the public right-of-way? So we gave model ordinance language for a community that can start to implement that type of regulation if they so desire. And we wanted to make sure that the municipalities, you know, we give them the language that they can install EV chargers on their publicly accessible properties in a way that's responsible, accessible, and helps move the conversation and move implementation in the direction that we would like it to see. Next slide. So, next steps. The website, Fully Charged, is publicly accessible. It is available on our website. We have a new, much quicker name for it. You can, it's montgomerycountypa.gov/fullycharged. So you can access it through there and also through links on our website. I love the fact that it is an online tool, so we can adjust as we go. We can add new data as more data comes in. We can adjust the model ordinance when we find out what works, what doesn't work. It can live. It can evolve. We can move forward, giving the best advice as time and technology move forward. And we're going to, today is its first day. It's a brand-new baby up on the website, so we want to take this out, and this is the first step in really publicizing it and making sure that our communities know that it's a resource for them to use. Gabby just pulled up the website itself. I don't want to tempt the IT fates by navigating too deeply into it, but I wanted you to just get a view of what it looks like. The Experience Builder allows you to scroll and read the whole thing from the first sentence to the very end, which it is beautifully written. I recommend you read every word multiple times. But if you're on the go and you want to skip to something in particular, the tabs allow you to jump to... I have you right here is at the interactive mapping. And then you can zoom in, scroll in. As you click on certain data points, it will bring up information about that. To help hide that conversation, why is commercial zoning an opportunity for EV infrastructure? Why is it important to look at a quarter-mile buffer around the existing publicly accessible charging because somebody who lives in a multifamily may be able to walk there, charge their car, and walk home? Or walk to with some other amenity that makes that charging more accessible, more easy to use? So we have it. It's there. We hope it's successful, and that we'll continue the conversations throughout our communities about this important topic.
Any questions?
You mentioned fire a few times. Would it be protocols? Because there are specific protocols on what to do when vehicles catch fire and where they could go to, and there's a lot of stuff around that.
So what the model ordinance does is we do talk about the issue. The ordinance itself talks about what a community, the regulations that they can put in as these chargers are installed, referencing the fire code that they should implement, and then also some of the things that they could do about emergency shut-off switches, sprinkler systems for interior charging. For the actual first responder, like how do you put out the fire?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's outside of... We let the experts on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, but, because it'd be interesting with when you're, for communities that don't have, people that don't have driveways and, you know, using the right-of-way or parking in the streets and the protocols associated to that, you know?
It's a tough one. And that's, that has been the biggest, the hardest issue to tackle.
Right.
So, you know, we've used the best practices that we have found. We've vetted it through multiple stakeholders. And honestly, because it's an ordinance, it can evolve. You know, a community does it, it works. Take what works, continue to do that. If something needs to change, we can always change the model ordinance to adjust.
I was just going to wish Robert a happy belated birthday.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you for your, your work on this, and, and thank you. This is really cool. Is it mobile friendly?
It is mobile. Yep. So you can use it on your phone, tablet, and probably, probably works best on a laptop because of the size of the mapping, my old eyes.
Yeah. I'm just thinking, you know, if somebody's on the go and they're trying to look for a spot, a mobile, mobile-ready, so if you said, it's, it's good. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, no, this is a great example of just the role we play as a county and how we can support municipalities and others who are trying to advance issues like, you know, sustainability when it comes to building EV charging infrastructure. Like we've put it all in one place, made it as easy as possible so that, you know, many different people who want to make a difference can, you know, have the resources and move forward. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Great. All right, so we will move on to public comment. This is the first public comment period. There's two public comment periods. This one is just for today's pending votes, resolutions, bids, and RFPs, contracts. So if you have a comment on those, you can make it now. All other comments can be after we go through the votes. Go ahead.
No, no public comment.
Okay, so there's no comments on that, which is good. We can move on quickly then. So moving to approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the April 3, 2025 minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dabello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The minutes are approved. Moving on to resolutions. We have a resolution described by, there he is. He's there by the time I look up. Scott France, go ahead.
Thank you. Some, some short ones right up front. In fact, these are called short-term contracts as opposed to our typical community planning assistance contracts. Two of them are for school districts, for enrollment projection studies, a popular product of ours, none more so than this year. These are our fourth and fifth. In fact, they won't even be done until the fall when our time opens up to conduct them. They are for the school districts of the Wissahican District as well as Jenkins Town. Wissahican's back for the second time. It was around 2018 we did their first study. And Jenkins Town is a, a brand-new district for us, so we'll be looking at them for the first time. And these, I'll, I'll skip the details of the, of the study, but the contract itself will run from, for Wissahican, from September 15 through December 31 of, of this year. The total cost is $13,770, and the school district share, 75%, is $10,327. For Jenkins Town, that study will run from October 1 through December 31, the end of this year, and has the same cost with the school district share of $10,327. And then we have a third short-term contract, which is, which is a little unique. It's for, right here in Norristown. We were asked, approached by them to do an update of their 2012 subdivision and land development ordinance, which we were very excited to, to have that opportunity. So we're going to be going back and, and looking at a short list of cleanups and rewriting their landscaping requirements. The services also include an audit of recently constructed developments, coordination with multiple planning staff and municipal engineer, presentations to the planning commission, and any necessary design testing. So this is also a great opportunity, again, to work formally with Norristown and Project, and we look forward perhaps to this leading to a, a more planning exercise and, and opportunity with, with this, with the municipality. The total cost of that contract, which will run from May 1 through December 31 of this year, is $8,262, with the municipal share being $6,196.50. So that resolution with all three, I believe, earned.
Great. Is there a motion to approve authorization of short-term planning assistance contracts for Wissahican and Jenkins Town school districts and the municipality of Norristown? So moved, moved by Commissioner Dabello. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next, moving on to the authorization to build a cell tower in Lower Gwinnett's Penland Woods.
Thank you. This one will take a little more explanation, but, but I find it interesting. This morning, I have a resolution before you to address a request from Lower Gwinnett Township for the county's permission to construct a cellphone tower on the township-owned property known as Penland Woods. If you can go to the first slide. Just quick locational context. Obviously, in our county, Lower Gwinnett, roughly the central area of the county, well-developed and mature suburb in, in the county. Next slide. Towards the southern boundary of the municipality, you can see where Penland Woods is located, largely surrounded by residential development in that area. And next slide. And blown into a, a close-up view with the aerial, I'll be referring to some of the, the locational aspects of the site, but here you can see outlined in blue, two segments, Area 1 and 2, all comprise Penland Woods, with one being more passive recreation in the woods with the trail running through, and then the active recreation of baseball fields and a few other facilities. What's important to note is cell coverage in this area has grown increasingly inadequate for nearby residents and park users, causing a major public safety concern. As our society more and more depends on this service, this area of, of our county is definitely lacking. After an extensive search and analysis for potential locations to install a 150-foot cellphone tower, the township felt its only viable option was to build a tower on the Penland Woods property so that it could serve both park users and the surrounding communities that currently lack service. The tower would be constructed by a private company and leased to cellphone providers. Forty percent of the gross revenue generated by leasing the tower to cell providers would be paid to Lower Gwinnett Township as part of a ground lease arrangement. The proposed tower location is an existing maintenance area adjacent to two baseball fields. And it's important to note, no trees would be removed for its construction, and no new impervious coverage would be added. It's already improved land, and the access road to it is already there as well, so it's about as minimal as you could get on the ground, about 150 square feet where the tower would sit. Why does the county need to give its approval and action? Lower Gwinnett's acquisition of Penland Woods was one of the first projects awarded funding under the county's Open Space Program in 1993. The county contributed $867,000 in county open space funds to assist with that acquisition. There were many additional funding sources, including the township open space funds and a general obligation bond. And the Wissahican Valley Watershed Association, which is now known as Wissahican Trails, contributed $276,000 to the township for this acquisition. That money included funds contributed by residents of the township, including Penland Village, which is next to, adjacent to the east of, of the site. And it's important to note, they, they really were responsible for getting this, making this happen back in the beginning, even going seven or eight years before that acquisition took place. As a condition to the additional funding sources, Lower Gwinnett Supervisors executed a declaration of covenants which stated that any change of use on the property would require prior written consent of the county. Lower Gwinnett Township also executed a conservation easement with the two easement areas as you see here, and the existing maintenance area identified for the proposed cell tower is located in easement area 2. There's a little red star there if you can make it out next to that smaller field, which is where the tower would be located. Cell towers were not a permitted use in Penland Woods per the original easement, so Lower Gwinnett Township amended easement in 2023 to permit a single cell tower, and the supervisors followed an amendment procedure that included public hearings and comment regarding the proposed amendment, and it was approved. In 2024, planning commission staff was first notified of the proposal to site the tower within Penland Woods. The addition of the cell tower constitutes a change in use according to our solicitors, and therefore, the county's prior consent is required. As a result, the proposed cell tower, as a result, the proposed cell tower was discussed at three separate county open space board meetings in November and December of last year and February of this year. While it took some effort, the township provided the open space board with an effective demonstration of the need for service in this area and the lack of viable locations as an alternative. Throughout the open space board process, planning commission staff consulted with Wissahican Trails, as did the township, concerning its awareness of and position regarding the proposed cell tower, and that was catalyzed by the role Wissahican Trails played in the original funding of Penland Woods, its related fiduciary responsibility to its original donors, and Wissahican Trails' responsibility to achieve a net conservation benefit in conjunction with its support for placing the cell tower in Penland Woods. So at the February Open Space Board, they formally recommended approval of the cell tower with four related conditions. However, it became apparent that not all of the conditions would be acceptable to township residents and members of the community, so we stepped in and tried to find a, a common ground that would achieve both the conservation and the public safety needs of this area. Following that recommendation from the open space board, the county, county staff, from the planning commission, Lower Gwinnett Township representatives, Wissahican Trails, led by their director, as well as members of the neighboring community, continued discussions regarding those conditions and came to a modified compromise represented in the conditions that are now included in this resolution. Next slide. So this is the last slide. I, I won't read entirely through these, but I just want to give you a quick idea of what these include. And they're kind of an evolved nature of what the open space board recommended. Some of them are exactly identical, and then further work was needed. On the first one, it really, it just states that specific notice must be given to Wissahican Trails on any future amendments to the easement. While this would generally happen anyway, it's just an added extra insurance to make sure it's not overlooked. Number two, any revenue, as I mentioned, 40% of the revenue would come back to the township, and it was agreed that that revenue would be used to further other conservation efforts within the township. Three, if this tower ever becomes obsolete or unused, there's a clause in here that requires it to be removed by either the private operator or the township. Someday, if we never need towers and, and cell, cell services differently, provided differently, we have a lot of zombie towers out there that don't have conditions like this, which I think is important. And then four, this was the one that really took some time, and it was in the effort to achieve this net conservation benefit, where we're enhancing the overall picture while accommodating the needs of the community. And this is the idea that the township and Wissahican Trails would collaborate to identify another parcel or area that's suitable to both parties for the enhancement of conservation value. That effort has already begun, but it will take some time to, to figure out exactly and work out the details, but both sides are very committed to resolving that and finding the answer. So this condition just maintains the requirement for that. Now, process is already started. Finally, I want to stress that getting to the agreement in front of you with these conditions is the result of an earnest and deep effort from the involved stakeholders that include township officials, residents of the surrounding community, and Wissahican Trails. Both the township and Wissahican Trails have made reasonable arguments to justify their positions, and these conditions allow us to achieve success on both sides. A cell tower provides absolutely needed service for the nearby residents and users of the park, and a net conservation benefit is gained through new commitments to open space and conservation in the township while utilizing revenue from the cell tower lease. I want to personally acknowledge and thank those who helped us get to this point, which include Lower Gwinnett Township manager Mimi Gleason, who's actually with us today. Thank you for coming. And the board of supervisors at Lower Gwinnett, led by their chair, Daniel Duckett. Wissahican Trails director, Gail Farmer, and representing her board, obviously also instrumental, and also the community members of Penland Village, led by Carol Jones. Carol came to the open space board meeting and provided an important perspective and history of the community's relationship to this open space and park. Without their original passion and desire to keep the woods in place, there would not have been this jewel of active and passive recreation still here today. And finally, a thank you to our open space board members. That the part of their charge is to maintain the standards of the public's investment in open space, and they will always provide a high level of scrutiny and advise on appropriate solutions. So thank you for the time they volunteer towards this effort constantly. And that's the resolution.
Any questions?
I was just going to make a comment. Thank you for that thorough explanation, and I'm sure we don't have all the time to talk about what actually transpired behind the scenes, but, you know, sometimes it's about compromise, and grateful to all the stakeholders involved because, you know, as I understand it, you know, if you can't access your cellphone, you know, to call 911, or if there's an emergency, that could be a challenge for, that is a challenge for the residents in, in Penland. So just, I want to thank you for your leadership on this, and just glad that the stakeholders were able to come to, you know, a meaningful compromise to really allow us to still, you know, preserve open space, but also care about the public safety of our friends and neighbors. So, so thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to kind of mirror that. You provided a lot of detail and background of everything that went on, but I'm not sure how much, you know, because you're, it was a great explanation and all that. But what I, I want to say is that when these towers go up, especially in communities, there's people that afford it, there are people that are against it, but the efforts to, to ensure that, you know, very well thought out, very, you know, a lot of detail, a lot of, you know, review, a lot of planning, a lot of interaction with all the appropriate bodies, including the neighbors and all that. So I just want to, again, you know, commend you and everyone that was involved, because it was, it was handled very professionally as far as looking, you know, at all, all the details, all, you know, dotting all the i's, crossing all the t's, because we don't want people to think that this thing is just thrown in there, you know, and, and that's not, that was certainly not the case. So thank you for all your efforts.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. And, you know, sometimes I wish we had zoning authority, and other times I realize that that would change our meetings drastically. In every municipality, but yeah, I commend you, the whole team, everyone who's involved in coming to this resolution, and, you know, cell service is not a luxury, it's an essential utility in many ways, and so we've got to make sure people have access to that. This is, this is the right way to do it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2 as described by Scott France?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dabello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Steve Forster. There's that TEFRA approval consideration.
Good morning, commissioners. Steve Forster, Director of Commerce. Before you today is a request by the Friends Central School, a nonprofit corporation seeking a resolution approving the issuance of a series or one tax-exempt revenue bond totaling approximately $5 million. Friends Central School is an independent Quaker school founded in 1845, serving approximately 900 students in nursery through 12th grade. The bonds to be issued will fund capital improvements at their upper and lower campuses located at 1101 City Avenue and 228 Old Gulf Road, both in Wynwood, Montgomery County. The bonds to be issued, are to be issued by the Montgomery County Industrial Development Authority and have been approved by the IDA pursuant to a TEFRA hearing and resolution adopted April 10, 2025. The hearing was properly advertised on the IDA website from April 2nd through April 10. Because the financing is for a Montgomery County-based entity, the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1952, or TEFRA, sorry, 1982, or TEFRA, requires approval of the highest elected official in the county where the funds are to be utilized. Approval of the bond issue will benefit the health, safety, and welfare of residents of Montgomery County by upgrading the school athletic facilities, restoring elements of a historical building on campus, and improving an entrance used by families, students, faculty, and staff. Neither the General Credit nor the Taxing Authority of Montgomery County are pledged as security for these bonds. Thus, the county takes no financial risk nor obligation in this transaction, and it does not impact the county's balance sheet in any way. I therefore request your approval of the resolution as presented by the solicitor approving the issuance of the bonds, and we have our first assistant solicitor, Ms. Calder, here today, and myself to answer any other questions that you may have.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 3 as described by Steve Forster? So moved. Moved by Commissioner Dabello. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to farm board reappointment. Is there a motion to reappoint Brett Altman to the Montgomery County Agricultural Land Preservation Board as described in G4? So moved. Moved by Commissioner Dabello. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Reappointment is approved. Next, we'll hear from Tony Brew, our HR chief of personnel list.
All right, good morning, commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Commissioner Department's personnel list. It has a three-page document dated April 16, 2025, with a timestamp of 2:47 PM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are, and are presented for your consideration.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the April 17, 2025 personnel presentation as given by Mr. Anthony Brew?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second? I'll second. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Section I, an advertisement of bids, RFPs, for Montgomery County under Exhibit A. Is there a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs as described on attached Exhibit A?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Second by Commissioner Dabello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to awards of contract under Exhibit B. Is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for Montgomery County under attached Exhibit B?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dabello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve contracts and awards is approved. Moving on to awards of contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force. Is there a motion to approve the contracts, awards, amendments, and renewals for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force as described on attached Exhibit C?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Dabello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we're done with our business for the meeting, and we'll close, prior to our closing comments, we have the general public comment period. So please make sure these are comments relevant to the business of the board, and please limit your time to three minutes.
Vince Obinski?
Could you say Vince?
Yes.
I can't hear you. Good morning, everybody. My name is Vince Obinski. I'm from Whiting Township. I have a request and a comment. In regard to request, I'd ask the commissioner to consider getting the agenda meeting information out prior to the day before or so. If you want thoughtful feedback from the community, it would be helpful to have this in our hands with enough time to properly review it. And the same would go with the staffing information. I just saw it today. Maybe it was online and I missed it, but it would be helpful to have that so we could prepare thoughtful commentary around what we see here. So doing it this way causes us to not have a chance to really develop some good questions. So anyway, that would be my request. I would ask the board if they would consider doing that in a timely fashion. So anyway, that would be my request. I would ask the board if they would consider doing that in a timely fashion. My comment is related to Commissioner DeBello's comments about a ongoing project to deal with the deficit here in Montgomery County. I really like that. I think it's timely. It's very important, because I couldn't agree with you more. Expenses are going through the roof, and as you know, expenses to you become tax increases for me. And you don't want more tax increases. We want to get this deficit under control. It's a fairly significant number. It's going to require a lot of work. So I do look forward to future Commissioner meetings where you'll update us on the progress you're making in regard to this very important issue, to keep the costs of the citizens of Montgomery County down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'll just note that, you know, that was a contract we voted on. You can have a seat, it's all right. Thank you. I'll just note that that was a contract we voted on at the last meeting in terms of the cost-saving consultant. We voted on that unanimously, and we also created a new office called the Office of Innovation Strategy and Performance, and they've developed a whole plan on how we're going to approach systematically where it places where we can save costs. We also created a new commission to advise on, we use artificial intelligence, which, you know, in many ways can help in that regard. And so we've got a number of initiatives that we've all supported and enacted in the last, in the last month and prior, and we'll absolutely keep everybody updated on what's happening on that front. So, thank you.
Michelle Mallore?
Hi, good morning. How's everybody? Actually, I think we're afternoon. I am super excited about the scavenger hunt with the trails. That's going to be so much fun with the kids. I'm here because of, you know, again, the taxes going through the roof. Over the last four years, I believe there was a 52% tax increase. And I really think we need to get a handle on the spending. And as far as the rest of the country, the way they're trending and doing away with a lot of the DEI practices, I'm kind of confused why we just hired four new DEI, you know, department heads. And with that, we are in jeopardy of losing a lot of federal funding money. I believe it's, one, one federal funding is, we get $160 million. Like, where's that money going to come from? I can't afford more taxes, and I believe a lot of people, a lot of Montgomery County residents can't afford more taxes. I believe rather than two people dictating that our taxes are going to be like, like raised, and we're going to negate the federal funds that we should be getting, I believe it should be a question on the ballot, so that the people can democratically actually vote on this. I believe we should have a, two, two questions on the ballot. The first question I believe should be, do you feel that Monco should proceed with DEI development and thus becoming ineligible for federal funding that would exponentially increase your taxes? Yes or no? And I too, tomorrow, have a one-year anniversary, so I'm with you. I have a cousin, sweet, beautiful boy, was walking home, and he was mowed down by an automobile. The automobile got out, looked at him, drove away. That was seen on a business camera, a local business camera. While laying in the street, another car came, mowed him over while laying there, got out, looked at him, and drove away. That was seen by a trucker, who then said, "Oh my God, this is a body," called it in. My cousin died. Through interpreters, you know, it was, you know, they thought they, it was a deer. No, it wasn't a deer. You looked at it. These were people who were here illegally. And because of that status, they were not charged with anything. There was, there was, there was no charge, not even a, like, their cars weren't impounded for not having, for not having insurance. There wasn't even a citation issued for not having a driver's license or insurance. So, which brings me to the second question that I believe should be on our ballot, which is, do you believe Montgomery County should be a sanctuary county? Because that impacts so many people, and I, I believe it should be a democratic process where the people vote on it. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Preston Lutwiler? Preston?
Hello, my name is Preston Lutwiler. I'm at 2 Woodmont Court, Schenksville. That's actually in Limerick. And it's on the Perkyomen Watershed. So I've been a supporter of the Perkyomen Watershed for almost 40 years, and I was glad to see you supporting them and honoring them today along with four other watershed organizations. There's a lot of good news here today. The Montgomery County Reentry Initiative, I think, is a model and wonderful thing that the county is doing. The information from the district attorney and the coroner about drug overdose deaths is very heartening. Also very heartening is the maintenance of the AAA bond rating today. About a month ago, I received my tax bill for the township and the county taxes. And I, for one, am happy to pay my county and township taxes, especially my county taxes, for a county that is run so well and is doing so many good things. So I'm not happy about what's happening to my IRA, and that's not your fault. That's somebody else who's doing that. The Valley Forge Park rev-run is great. I'm glad that, that we have Valley Forge Park in our county. I know people who have been laid off who run that park. And we're going up to 2026 to the anniversary of our 250th anniversary as a nation. And I don't know how we're going to celebrate it with a decimated staff in Valley Forge Park and with SEPTA that's not going to be funded. I'm going to be calling my state senator and urging them to get on the ball and fund the governor's initiative and the governor's budget to support SEPTA. In terms of immigrants, one thing that happened this past week, I guess, I guess last week, was in Sackett's Ford, New York, where ICE came in and hauled off three people from a dairy farm. Three kids, actually four, three kids and a mother, sent them to Louisiana. And the town got together thousands of people. This is Tom Homan's town, and marched in the streets, and that family was returned. I hope if something like that happens in Montgomery County, that is going to be our response. Thank you.
Linda Weaver?
Linda Weaver, I live in Schenksville, Limerick Township. And in the interest of full disclosure, I want all of you to know that I am a former public servant who retired after 41 years of service. So instead of firebombing the residents, the People's House in Harrisburg, where I've visited many times, and by the way, also in full disclosure, I was on Governor Shapiro's transition team. I think we should be honoring our public servants and protecting them to the best of their ability. And I appreciate the fact that you Commissioners spoke out in horror at the, at what happened in Harrisburg to our governor. So thank you for that. I wish our, the President of our country had been as forceful in his condemnation of this violence, which many people believe he has helped to incite. So thank you for that. And I want to say that I am proud to live in Montgomery County, and again, I pay my taxes in Montgomery County. And I appreciate that you share the values that I share as a Montgomery County resident, and you support them. Having said that, I also am very thankful that you support the rule of law in Montgomery County, so that as I watch in horror as the President of our country is ignoring a Supreme Court directive to return an individual who was illegally taken from our country to be housed in a foreign prison. While I watch that, I am grateful that in Montgomery County, that you will not permit things like that to happen. And I implore you to continue with that status, and thank you.
Any other comments?
Kent?
Well, we signed in as Kent, but I'm going to do a little bit of Korean as a symbolic representation of the Asian community, one of the Asian, so. Good morning, respected Commissioners, officials, and residents. And thank you, other fellow residents who supported the issues around immigration and federal enforcement that's happening without a fair cause. So my name is Jay Lee from Woody Center, and this is Kent Quo. It's a grassroots organization dedicated to serving thousands of Asian-American residents here in Montgomery County. So I'll start speaking in Korean, and he will translate me. First, I want to sincerely thank Commissioner Winder, Matiza, and DeBello for acknowledging the challenge faced by our immigrant committees and speaking for the community. Your support means a great deal, especially during this time of uncertainty and fear.
Today, I stand before you on behalf of many families and individuals we've spoken with over the past several months, people who are living in fear, fear of deportations, fear of being separated from loved ones, fear of an uncertain future and the place they call home, fear of losing their businesses.
As we move away from immigration policies, we are seeing a number of people who are not going to go to school.
In response to raising anti-immigrant rhetoric and policies, we are hearing a wave of concerns from across the county. Regardless of their immigration status, people are canceling international travels. Some are choosing not to go to work, others choosing avoid grocery stores or even medical appointments. Children ask why their classmates are suddenly missing from school.
So, well, time, so I'm just jumping to the conclusion. So right now, Montgomery County is showing leadership. Welcome County Policy is going to show that everyone can live a normal life without fear.
That's why now it's time for Montgomery County to show true leadership. A welcoming county policy sends a clear message that the county values every person, regardless of their immigration status or where they come from. A welcoming policy would give residents the confidence to leave their homes, go to work, eat at local restaurants, send their kids to school, and live without fear, live with dignity.
Let's choose courage over division and unity over silence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Levy?
My name is Cindy Levy. I live in Lower Guena Township. I've spoken here before. I want to read something really brief. It said terrible things are happening outside. At any time of day or night, poor helpless people are being dragged out of their homes. They're allowed to take only a knapsack and a little cash with them, and even then, they're robbed of these possessions on the way. Families are torn apart. Men, women, and children are separated. Children come home from school to find that their parents have disappeared. This is from Anne Frank's diary on January 13th, 1943. The issues that we are all dealing with, organizations, individuals, our county servants, our government, our police, everyone is dealing with are huge. They are the most important thing we are facing this generation in this country. I absolutely urge you to consider and pursue a welcoming county policy that would clearly state that we are not authorizing our local first responders, our local police, to do the work of ICE for them. That will not present, prevent a lot of what is happening and is probably going to happen. But it does say, we need our police, our first responders, to do their work in this community to keep us all safe, to enforce the laws, to, to recognize that we all have value here. Thank you for considering this. I know there are reasons not to do this. There are consequences to almost every action any of us take right now. But there are consequences of inaction as well. And those are just as real, possibly even more real, than the consequences of what might happen, though it's very real if we take a stand in the county on our budget, on our programs. But we need to take a look at this while we have time. Thank you.
You do realize that as a county, we don't have authority over local municipalities.
I understand. What I think is important is that we, in this county, take a stand. And we need to fight this on every level, with every group. It is, I understand. It is not a one-and-done decision. Thank you.
Barb Furman?
Good morning. My name is Barbara Furman, New Hanover Township. May 20th is our, our next election day. It is also the election for local Joe and inspectors. Those elected positions represent everyone in their precinct, which, and these precincts have not been adjusted for possibly decades, and they represent numbers from 500 to 4,000 voters in townships and boroughs across Montgomery County. Until 2019, the Joe and inspectors oversaw every single vote at their precinct, whether it was in-person or absentee. Best practices in vote processing, tallying, and counting, I believe, is at the local precinct by the people that are elected to serve in that capacity. When we show up to vote, we publicly, with our signature and present our photo ID, process and transparency, they cannot easily question that. It would not be hard in the next five months to simply change the timeline for submitting absentee and mail-in ballots and accept those ballots only up until five days before the election. The voter could still go to their local precinct to vote in person. When people know ahead of time the timeline, which would include the Joe and the inspectors and the poll workers being able to verify all eligible votes that follow processes and procedures, there would still be provisionals and adjudication, but it should cut down on that. Each elected official has their job description, and the Joe doesn't say, the Joe job description doesn't say, "Only the in-person voters." Please consider this measure for the citizens of this county. And I also have another quick comment, just a thought in the first public comment period. And Vince, he alluded to this. People come to the meeting prepared with comments on subjects on the agenda. Why don't you have the first comment period before the Commissioners' comments? You know, it goes like an hour before the first comment period begins, and some people... You know, it goes like an hour before the first comment period begins, and some people want to comment, they've prepared, and they can't even stay that long. So, I would appreciate it. Yeah, we would appreciate it.
Commissioner Rosero?
Hi. Hi. My name is Alicia Rosero.
And good afternoon. My name is Julio Rodriguez. I'll be translating for her. I'm with the Pennsylvania Immigration Coalition, and we're supporting our community members from Unidas.
I'm in Norristown. Estoy aquí pidiendo una póliza de bienvenida. En este momento hay muchas personas en medio. Los negocios se ven dados, hay menos ventas porque la gente tiene miedo de salir. Necesitamos una póliza de bienvenida para que la gente sepa que pueden confiar en la policía, porque ahora que ven la policía piensan que es ICE. Este comité puede hacer ese cambio, por favor. Necesitamos una póliza lo más pronto posible.
Hello, my name is Alicia. I live in Norristown, and I'm here asking for a welcoming policy. Right now, there are a lot of people who are living in fear. Businesses are being affected, and there are fewer sales because people are afraid to go out. We need a welcoming policy so that people know that they can trust the police, because now when they see the police, they think that they're ICE. This committee can make this change. Please pass this welcoming policy as soon as possible.
Myrna Diaz?
Mi nombre es Myrna Diaz. Estoy aquí pidiendo que este comité hace una póliza de bienvenida. Yo quiero estar segura de que mi familia pueda vivir su vida sin miedo, y eso no es posible. No hay confianza en que el gobierno si no pasa una póliza de bienvenida, porque las acciones hablan más que las palabras, y ocupamos que el condado nos respalde en que no van a operar con ICE, porque no es requerido, y los que salen cuando hay demandas somos nosotros. Ya se gastó 30 mil en otros casos. Cuando ICE detiene a dos latinos en otros condados. Estamos viendo que las personas que hablan otro idioma son las que están agarrando. Por favor, pasen una póliza de bienvenida.
Hello, my name is Myrna. I'm here to ask that this committee pass a welcoming policy. I want to be sure that my family can live their lives without fear, and right now, that's not possible. There is currently no trust with the government if they don't pass a welcoming policy, because actions speak louder than words, and we need the county to support us. Right now, moreover, we need the county to not cooperate with ICE, because the ones that end up paying for lawsuits are us. In two instances, two Latinos were detained in other counties, and they paid, the counties paid $300,000 in settlements. We're seeing that people who speak other languages are the ones being detained. So, let's put a stop to that. Let's put a stop to ICE cooperation. Please pass a welcoming policy.
Leo Fernandez?
Buenas tardes, Comisionados. Mi nombre es Edith Fernandez, de la Organización Unidas para Servir Norristown.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Edith, and I'm a volunteer with Unidas para servir Norristown.
Queremos saber cuál ha sido el seguimiento del welcome. Estamos viendo cómo en otros estados están violando los derechos de nuestra comunidad migrante.
We would like to know what is the status of passing a welcoming policy. We are seeing how the rights of our immigrant communities are being affected in other states. We don't want that to happen here.
No queremos que eso pase aquí.
We don't want that to happen here.
El miedo en nuestra comunidad es muy real. Hay personas que ya no confían en la policía porque piensan que ICE va a ir por ellos.
The fear in our community is very real. There are people who no longer trust the police because they think they're ICE.
Esto ha hecho que muchos dejen de reportar crímenes, de buscar ayuda, o acudir a servicios básicos.
This has caused many to stop reporting crimes, seeking help, or accessing basic services.
Ese miedo está rompiendo la confianza y afectando a la seguridad de todos.
This fear is shattering trust and affecting everyone's safety.
Como líderes, necesitamos que ustedes nos digan qué acciones concretas se está tomando para asegurar que nuestras agencias no colaboren con ICE.
As leaders, we need you to tell us what concrete actions you are taking to ensure our agencies do not collaborate with ICE.
Cómo se están educando, cómo se están capacitando al personal, y qué mecanismos existen para que esta ley realmente se cumpla.
Going as far as how personnel are being trained and what mechanism exists to ensure that the law is truly being enforced.
Este no es un solo tema político. Es un tema de dignidad humana. Nuestra comunidad quiere vivir sin miedo, con confianza, con esperanza.
This is not just a political issue. It is an issue of human dignity. Our community wants to live without fear, with confidence, and with hope.
Y para eso necesitamos un compromiso claro y firme. Gracias.
And with that, we would like to ask for a very clear and firm commitment that this body will pass a welcoming policy. Thank you.
Saul Flores?
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Saul Flores, and I'm here to speak in favor of a welcoming policy as well. The welcoming policy will, sorry. I'm here to speak about welcoming policy that ensures that Montgomery County remains a safe and trusting place for everyone. As of right now, the immigrant residents of Norristown are living in fear, and that causes them to not trust and cooperate with law enforcement as much, which makes it unsafe for everyone in the county. Research shows that jurisdictions that separate local policing from immigration enforcement have lower crime rates and stronger community relationships. I hope that Montgomery County should join as part of these communities so that we can adopt a welcoming policy that prevents county resources, including local jails and police departments, from being used by ICE. In this, we will all benefit with every resident feeling safe to report crime, seek help, or participate in public life. Let's make that possible, please. Thank you.
Next, just for public comments.
Okay. All right, so we'll move to closing comments.
So, you know, I hate to sound repetitive, you know, but I'm going to say this because you all took the time to come here and talk about real fears and concerns that your friends and neighbors have. We don't have a definitive answer in terms of what we can and cannot do. It's complex, as you all can imagine, around welcoming policies. There's things that we just can't do because of the class of county that we are. But I think we've demonstrated a firm commitment to supporting immigrant communities by hiring Nellie, who's standing in the back. And while, you know, we only have a few hours to hold this meeting, there's a lot of work happening behind the scenes to ensure that we live out our values in our programs, in our services, and in how we conduct business as a county. I know that there was commentary earlier about why we expanded our Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. That was an initiative that Commissioner Matisa and I were quite supportive of, not, and that was something that we talked about, well, we didn't talk about it, but we wanted to usher in well before the administration changed hands, because being inclusive and caring about people that are different are a part of my values. And when I think about my late mother, and I think about my late grandmother, and what they instilled in me as a child, it was to love thy neighbor and treat others as you would like to be treated. So, this hateful rhetoric that we see in this boardroom, the hateful rhetoric that we see at the federal level, I have zero tolerance for. And so, while we don't have a direct answer on what we can do as a county, please know and be assured that we are working to ensure that we continue to live out our values and we continue to follow the law, right? Because I want to be clear, none of us on this board are for breaking the law, but we're going to do what's right for our friends and neighbors. So, I want to thank you again for coming. I'm sorry that we don't have direct answers, but please know that when anyone brings issues before this board, we take those issues into consideration, and we'll continue to work behind the scenes to see what we can continue to do. But our demonstration and our commitment to immigrant communities in Montgomery County is standing right back there in the red blazer. And so, that's action, and that's courage. So, I'll leave you with that.
Do you have any other closing comments?
No, that's it.
Yeah, I'll, usually I go this way, and I'm happy to respond here. What is happening federally is horrific. I can say that unconditionally. And what's, what you're able to tell us is the effects of that, right? And I think it's important for us to make sure that we carry these stories in every place where there are actions that can be taken. And of course, the number one place is going to be with our members of Congress, because the federal government has full authority over immigration. What we can do at the county level is ensure that we are supporting immigrant communities in every way possible, in the ways that we can, and that's across the board, from making sure they have access to, you know, whether it's small business support in the Commerce Department, making sure that when people go to Human Services or when they seek protection from abuse order, that they're not asked about, you know, whether they have a green card or whether they're a citizen or not. We're just here to serve Montgomery County residents. So, we're going to, you know, embark on a full review of the ways that the county departments interact with all of our residents, and the ways that we can make sure that our practices are inclusive and don't unfairly exclude those based on their, on their status. And so, I'm thankful that we have brought on a Director of Immigrant Affairs, because fact is probably only, you know, two other counties in the Commonwealth even have that and have made that initiative and focus. And I think only one of them has an active director right now. So, this is the first time in 300, or almost 300 years where that's been the case. So, we did that very deliberately because we recognize that there are nearly 100,000 residents in Montgomery County who are immigrants, and they deserve the representation, and they're already welcome. I mean, Montgomery County is a welcoming place. It's part of who we are as a community, as a society. I would love if federal government recognized that that's what made our country what it is today, and it's a shame that we're in the place we are right now nationally. But we are going to do everything we can to make sure we represent every resident, and, you know, Nellie is focused on that, that question. So, you will hear more from us as she continues her work. She came on how many days ago? How many weeks ago?
Three weeks.
Three weeks. Three weeks. And county government is sprawling. I think we've got, how many departments? Thirty-six departments. And, you know, there's 3,000 people, so we're going to look at every way we can. And I'm proud with the Udi Center. Thank you for your work in voting rights. You know, we did great work last year translating all of our voter guides in eight languages, and you've done that work on the civic side. Thank you. We do have elections this year too, and it's going to continue. But that's just one example of the kind of welcoming policy that we have enacted and will continue to enact, and there are hundreds of things that we can likely do across the board that will make things more inclusive, and that's what DEI is all about, as well as simply asking the question, are we including all of our residents? Are we thinking about everyone when we enact policies? So, we're committed to that. And I just have a couple other closing comments. I can come back to some of those, but on SEPTA, I just want to reiterate, this really comes down to your state senators. Thank you for bringing that up. We've got to bring the message loud and clear to all of our state senators, and, you know, not just one party or the other, everyone, because, you know, the governor has put out a proposal at 186 billion, sorry, million dollars. That would be a different story. But the fact is, if we really wanted to invest in mass transit and address the housing crisis, we actually need more than that. We need much more than that. So, if we received 100 million more per year, for example, we could have trains running every 15 minutes, which would be incredibly economic boon to all of the areas, I mean, the whole, the whole region and the state, but in particular, if we want vibrant main streets, if we want to build more housing that makes it attainable and affordable around transit, we need to invest in SEPTA. So, we're going to continue that advocacy and that work as the budget is negotiated. So, anyone who wants to participate in that or share their story about how they're affected, please reach out. So, go ahead.
The SEPTA thing, you keep mentioning, reach out, you need to reach out to the whole state legislative body.
Yeah.
Not just the state senate. I mean, it's, it's two houses that need to hear from people, although, I mean, there's, SEPTA has challenges, as you know. I mean, we're, I mean, we're still paying the previous director $500,000 that has moved on, so stuff like that doesn't help. But the bills are large, and there's a lot of things that have to happen. With SEPTA, there has to be, as I talked in the past about, that, you know, additional lines or new rail lines need to be considered because follow the population might, you know, be a short-term investment, but could be a long-term reward. So, but SEPTA is definitely needed throughout Philadelphia and the collar counties, so we'll have to see how we proceed forward and what investments the state's going to make to keep SEPTA on the hold. Montgomery County was, is, and will always be a welcoming community to our immigrants. Many immigrants came here, as mentioned, from, as Commissioner Weiner mentioned about Norristown, from a village, from Italy that migrated here, you know, many, many years ago. A lot of Montgomery County has been built through immigrants, and, you know, we, as mentioned, do everything to ensure that all of those immigrants are welcomed and they are getting all the services that they need. I know that there's a big debate out there of, you know, immigrants, people are here, you know, legally or not legally. That's not a debate for us, because we don't have authority over that. We don't have authority over federal laws. We don't have authority over municipalities. And one, again, you could put 50 people in a room and ask about their feelings as far as what's happened nationally, what's happened nationally this year, what's happened nationally in the past, and you'll get a long debate over that. And again, that's not for us as county commissioners to debate, you know, should the borders be open or should the borders be closed, because we don't have authority over that. We don't have authority over how undocumented individuals are handled moving forward. So, but we will continue to do what we can, because we do have a large immigrant population that has come here, that have come here through the legal process. And as Commissioner Weiner mentioned, none of us sitting up here are, or will break the law, and will support the law, and will do what's necessary to ensure that. But we are also very understanding as far as what people are feeling, and, you know, we, as Commissioner Matisa mentioned, we, within our services, would be trying to ensure if anybody comes and requires or needs services from the county, they're receiving those services, because it's not, again, our authority or our responsibility to ask questions. to ask questions as far as who they are, where they came from. In the past, our responsibility is to ensure that we're providing those services. And I, as a commissioner, will continue to ensure that that happens. And as a commissioner, I will also ensure that I will always support enforcing the law.
Any others?
Nope.
Okay. With that, our upcoming board meeting dates, our next board meeting is Thursday, May 1st, 2:25 here in the boardroom at 10:00 a.m. And we look forward to seeing all of them. Is there a motion to adjourn the April 17, 2025 meeting? Moved by Commissioner Pello, is there a second?
I'll second that.
移到 by Commissioner Weiner. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Meeting is adjourned. We'll move on to a short meeting for the Salary Board. Controller. Continue? Okay. Okay, controller's here. Moving on to the Salary Board. Any public? No. Okay. All right. Tony Brew, our Chief HR Officer, will present the Salary Board list.
All right. Good afternoon, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board list. It is a four-page document dated April 16, 2025, with a timestamp of 2:47 p.m. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for the Salary Board's consideration.
Is there a motion to approve the April 17, 2025 Salary Board list as given by Mr. Tony Brew?
No.
Moved by Commissioner Weiner. Is there a second?
Second.
移到 by Controller Hart. Any board comment?
The only comment that I have is each week I ask to separate certain things, which doesn't happen, so I'm forced to vote no across the board. And it's unfortunate, because there are positions that I do support that I think are necessary. For example, the district attorney positions that are listed this month or this, on this agenda. But, you know, this is, this is the situation that you put me within, so I'll be voting no.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Okay. The list is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn the April 17, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board?
No move.
Moved by Commissioner Weiner. Is there a second?
Second.
移到 by Controller Hart. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We'll go straight into the Election Board now. So, moving on to the Election Board. Here from our Director of Elections, Frank Dean. Move up. We have no opening comments.
Good morning, Election Board. I'm here today to request authorization for the relocation of 11 polling locations for the 2025 primary election taking place on May 20, 2025. The Board of Elections has given the authority by the Election Code to relocate polling places as they see fit. These locations are listed in the agenda attachment titled 2025 Election Polling, 2025 Primary Election Polling Location Changes.
Yeah.
Notice has been posted.
Please, one second. You're correct. I didn't have the correct agenda in front of me. So let me just call to order the meeting formally. And, and, thank you. We were supposed to take a break. There's a reason for that. But we'll call to order the April 17 meeting of the Montgomery County Election Board, seeing all three board members present. And do we have any opening comments? No comments from the Commissioners? Any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay. That was the most important part. So seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from the prior election boards. Is there a motion to approve the November 14 and November 25 meeting minutes of the Montgomery County Election Board? Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
移到 by Commissioner Weiner. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Now.
Yes, I would like to request authorization to move 11 polling locations. These locations have been provided to you in a document titled 2025 Primary Election Polling Location Changes. Notice has been posted at these locations that the polls are being moved as required by law, and the locations have all been notified of the move. We've also notified representatives from the county Republican and Democratic Committees regarding these moves. In addition to notice being posted, every voter in these precincts will be given a new voter ID card indicating the location change and identifying their new polling location. Those are scheduled to go out in the mail tomorrow pending today's vote. I'm happy to answer any questions you have and request that the Board approve these relocations as presented.
Is there a motion to approve the relocation of 11 polling locations as listed on the attached document titled 2025 Primary Election Polling Location Changes?
No move.
Moved by Commissioner Weiner. 移到 by Commissioner DeBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any questions for Frank Dean?
Are you going to come to meetings again now?
Yes.
You've kind of been around for a while.
Yes, yes. You'll be saving me a lot.
Covering from last year.
As much as one can, yeah.
Yep.
But we're ready for the next one. We always are.
Yep.
And do you, do you want to provide just a brief update on where we are in terms of ballots and the finalization of the court?
Absolutely, yeah. So our ballot was, up until about two minutes before I walked in the door, held up due to one last outstanding appeal. However, the Commonwealth Court just issued a ruling in that case, so there is a chance that we will be able to get our ballots out very quickly.
What was the ruling?
Beginning next week.
What was the ruling? The person is on the ballot.
The ruling is that the candidate will be allowed to stay on the ballot.
Okay. So we are essentially ready to send out ballots?
Yes.
Tomorrow?
We have to do a couple last-minute quality checks and then we can give the approval.
Your goal is within the next few days.
Yes.
I may give you a little coverage there.
The go-ahead to mail，在mail ballots Monday.
Monday?
Monday.
Okay. That sounds good. Provided there's no hiccups.
Correct. I have to confirm some details with the Solicitor's Office, but pending that conversation, we should be in a place where we can give the go-ahead on Monday.
Okay. Perfect. Any other questions?
I'm good.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. Well, is there a motion to adjourn the April 17 meeting of the Montgomery County Elections? Moved by Commissioner DeBello. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
移到 by Commissioner Weiner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.